Abatement district and mosquito abatement district. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony?
Mr. Chair, on behalf of Phil McGrane in pursuit of Idaho Code 311604, I am presenting a balanced budget for the ensuing fiscal year and we are convened to agree on a tentative amount per office and department for the FY 2122 tentative budget. The tentative budget for county funds and pest and mosquito districts is 275 million, four hundred eighty seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. This includes 60,164 that was added for the landfill after the budget presentation Wednesday per Commissioner Davidson's request. There was testimony specifically about wages for certain positions at the landfill. We were asked what we could do at this point in the process, so we added 50,000 plus fringe to personnel with the thought that it would be available should the board choose to review and increase those positions. Since this was not part of deliberations, we wanted to specifically call this piece out before adopting the tentative budget.
Okay. Is there any discussion amongst, on the tentative budget?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
In addition to that, yes.
So Trent, on the 60,164,000, how many employees at the landfill would that impact?
It could, it could impact all of them. It just depends on how you want to distribute those funds. So 50,000 plus the fringe would incur 60,164 dollars cost to us, but it's, we haven't designated it towards any specific person. It's just in a line of other for personnel if the board shows.
And it may not all be used.
And it may not all be used. It's the discretion of the board.
NHR will weigh in on it in terms of the.
Absolutely.
But it's enough money to get them up to.
Oh yeah, it's enough to get them, well, yeah, I did some, some just short calculation. People that are under 15 dollars an hour, it only takes about a thousand dollars, but there's others, you know, some compression and so.
It would be enough to, to do something similar.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So the, the intent for the request was to bring any employee at the landfill who's not up to 15 dollars an hour to starting wage of 15 dollars an hour, plus an additional bump to the, the low ranking employees who are at about 15, 60 an hour, who are working in the outdoors at the landfill to give them a bump, to make that position a little bit more competitive with the market that we have right now. The sad fact is McDonald's is pretty much competitive with that position at the moment and to avoid losing those people to other jobs and also to recognize the fact that, you know, working at the landfill outdoors, especially during a historic heat wave, was probably some of the, the least desirable positions in Ada County and I think warrant an additional bump, which should be discussed amongst, you know, HR and to come up with the exact, but that is the intent of my request for additional funding. I do recognize that additional positions may have to be adjusted upward to, to prevent compression, which would be the unintended consequence.
Okay. Is there further testimony?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So maybe Bethany could speak about the rest of the employees in Ada County. We're trying to get everybody up to 15 and I think with the quota and merit that the board has approved, most of the positions will be above 15 starting the first of the new fiscal year, but I think we have a few that still need to be adjusted. Want to go ahead and speak to that?
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, I did a look from the latest data we had. At the current time, there's 98 that are under the 15. With the new fiscal year, if two and two is applied to each of those positions, we'd be down to 26 that are under the 15 dollar mark. Those would include the scale house operator positions, which our office has already started the compensation analysis and we'll have some market data back for you soon to make some recommendations for the landfill. In addition, there's a handful of other positions and some are getting very close to that 15. So I believe within the savings within each of those offices, we'd be able to address those positions. Again, it's only 26, so there, there'll be one position in the prosecutor as an example, two positions at the sheriff's office, cooks, drug screen technicians, just a handful of little positions that I think we can probably address in this next fiscal year and certainly look at any additional compression that comes from that. I don't anticipate that to be too terribly significant, however.
And then as a follow-up, Mr. Chair, so in the assessor's office, there's 26 and those will all be up to 1521 with the adjustments.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wants to speak to the budget? If not, I will close the public hearing and entertain a discussion from amongst the board. Any discussion from the board?
I think we're, we're ready to go to make a motion.
If there's, I'm, I'll, I'll consider a motion.
Right, Mr. Chair, I move to consider and publish the tentative budget for all county funds and the pest and mosquito abatement districts as submitted by the county budget officer in the amount of 275 million, four hundred eighty seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, causing a notice to be published, setting forth anticipated revenue, property taxes, and proposed expenditures and stating that the Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing for comment and feedback on June 16th at 4:30 PM and held another public hearing on July 21st at 6:00 PM, at which time all the county funds and the pest and mosquito districts requests were reviewed and will subsequently fix a final budget and make appropriations to each office or department of the county and the pest and mosquito districts at the August 9th, 2021 open business meeting.
Is there a second to the motion?
I will second that. I might add that this budget includes a 12 million dollar property tax cut. The first time in the history of Ada County where that kind of property tax cut has been made. The only, according to our clerk, the only other time that there was ever any property tax cut was 1980 and it was for 110,000 dollars. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So it should be noted that Ada County is cutting property taxes by 12 million dollars.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I haven't noticed any other jurisdictions taking similar steps as we are, so it sounds like a lot of the cities are increasing taxes into budget, so I feel, I feel very good about this budget and I'm happy that we can offer that kind of relief.
I did notice, at least from press reports, that the highway district was altering their, their, their budget somewhat because of the uproar they received.
Oh, they're not taking their full press.
Apparently not. They, they, they received a lot of input and they changed their, I don't know, I don't know what they're going to do, but they changed their mind a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Budget is adopted, or at least tentative budget.
A lot of steps, right?
Yeah, a lot of steps, a lot of steps, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Bethany.
Thanks, David. Okay, moving on. Next we'll have up resolution number 2654, a resolution to exempt Shakespeare Theater from the Ada County Noise Ordinance. I'm going to open the public hearing on resolution 2654. Is there anyone that would like to provide testimony? Crooked. I'll now close the public hearing. Is there discussion amongst the board?
Oh, Mr. Chair, Shakespeare has been operating out there on that property for many, many years and I think the folks that lived in and around Shakespeare are, probably were notified that there is an outdoor theater there, so I think that I ready to make the motion and feel good about exempting them from the noise ordinance. So I'll move to approve resolution 2654 as listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second to the resolution?
Second.
It should be noted that while there's no linkage to it, we find out what a pizometer is during the discussion.
Yes.
Yes, all right. You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
It's like, what's a pizometer? We actually have an easement to the pizometer, too.
We have, have an easement to the pizometer from the Shakespeare Theater.
Has to do with the dam.
It measures the water level in the, in the river. And it was a requirement that we had. Those pizometers have been there for a long time, but we, we'd never had an easement to it. As part of the process.
We've been trespassing the whole time.
As part of, as part of the process with FERC, we had to get an easement. And we got an easement.
Thanks to Lorna. Thank you, Lorna, if you're listening.
Yes. Okay, moving on. We have a provisional tax exemption from the Idaho Fish and Wildlife Foundation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, we've had conversations about this and I, I do believe that, that the foundation by funding the programs through fish and game do benefit the community at large significantly, so I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move to approve one provisional exemption as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We now have, we'll now take up licenses. We have 11 catering permits, three license applications, three new licenses, and two license transfers. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, it looks like there's a lot of weddings at sandstone vineyards. Don't know where that is, but. Okay. Nice.
Okay.
Right, people are getting married.
Yeah, well, that's good.
I'll go ahead then and make a motion to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including 11 catering permits, three license applications, three new licenses, and two license transfers and authorize the chair to send the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Next we have the FERC's office with two, L2 requests for extensions from the West Ada School District and the Kuna School District.
Yes, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this is traditional in the fact that Kuna and West School District have to submit their property tax certification prior to school starting and their levy is based off their attendance. And so they have always traditionally requested an emergency extension to that and will file after they figure out how many students are actually attending. They just were a way ahead of the curve this year. Normally you'd see this the day before the extension or before the deadline is due. And so they're, they're just ahead of the curve and wanting to make sure that you knew this would be happening after, after school starts and so for both Kuna and West Ada.
I guess Boise School District does not have that need for extension.
I believe it's because they start early and.
They don't have that point in time.
Yeah.
Because they, yeah, they do start early, just a couple of weeks early, they start a call, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Chair, I move to approve two requests for extensions for budget certification as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up we have Claim Journal. May I have a motion on the Claim Journal?
I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated July 23rd, 2021.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next are the personnel actions. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda. Remain on file and the commissioners.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have with us our distinguished assessor, Bob McQuaid. Do you have any update for us, Mr. Assessor?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Just a couple of brief updates. Things are pretty quiet in the assessor's office today. This is the week that the state tax commission puts on their summer school. The appraisers have to have at least 32 hours of instruction in a two-year period of time, otherwise they will lose their state certification. Also, there are classes that clerical staff would be interested in taking too, so a lot of people, it's very quiet over there. Motor vehicles, Shinnon, we had eight-minute average wait time last week.
Nice.
Getting close to where we used to be. Ridding was 10 minutes and Franklin was 41 minutes. It wasn't long ago, so 41-minute wait time, we would have just been ecstatic over that, but Franklin's work, they've had a pretty high turnout right there. So that's what's going on in the assessor's office this week.
That's because of staffing and Frank, right?
Yes, yes. They're just about fully staffed now. They've had a pretty high turnout right there.
Okay. Anything else for us?
That's everything.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. We have several tax cancellations this morning. I might. I might add these tax cancellations are really not tax cancellations, but rather tact adjustments, but we use that terminology because that's what's in the code. Yes. May I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations, i.e. adjustments, as listed on the agenda, which includes four tax cancellations for twenty nineteen, five tax cancellations for twenty twenty, seven tax cancellations for twenty twenty-one, and authorize the chair to send the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have with us our distinguished treasurer.
Good morning.
Do you have any updates for us?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. First of all, congratulations on the adoption of the tentative budget, especially a budget with the historic tax relief. As a tax collector, I do hear a lot on this topic. Tax payers are frequently calling us, so we are pleased to report that Ada County's portion of the tax bill does include the savings. I will just note, as, as you're aware, once we eventually prepare the bills in November, Ada County's portion is about twenty percent of the overall tax bill, so even though there could be, you know, just flat or a small amount of change for Ada County's portion, the eventual bills are going to depend on the other taxing districts that we collect for. So just didn't want people to think that just because Ada County took it, that the bill itself is going to be reduced. There's a lot that goes into that bill.
Is there any way we could include on the bill an item in each one of the tax, each one of the taxing districts where we could say Ada County minus twelve million, and each other one's plus so much?
Well, we have the graph that we put together. Or maybe in the graph, we could include that, that handout, and I think that graph speaks really clearly about, you know, we could maybe have a little note on the bottom. Sure, why not?
Well, I think it should be noted, and it should be noted on the tax bill somehow.
We certainly should.
Put our faces on there.
I don't want to do that. We can put, we can put yours on here, huh?
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
Who increased, who decreased?
Well, there's only gonna be one decrease that I'm aware of.
Exactly.
Right, so I just wanted to note that, because some people are getting excited when they hear tax relief from Ada County, but we are just a small portion of our bill.
We're a small portion of it, no question about it, and, and that's, in fact, for that reason, I think we should note it on the tax back. People notice that, hey, this is, this taxing district, Ada County, is at least smaller than, the, the tax portion collection is smaller than it was last year.
We will look in the ways to educate on that.
Well, if we can put Brad Little's name on, we could probably, we could probably do something different. I don't think we need a name necessarily, but you said the county, the county government. I think it'd be a good idea. Look into it, see if there's some way we can appreciate that. Anything else for us?
I'll be back this afternoon to talk about the county's investments with you, and then next week I'll be out attending the Treasurers Conference.
Good for you.
This afternoon, yes.
And where's the Treasurers Conference?
It's in Idaho Falls.
Oh, how fun. All right, thank you, thank you. Next up will be the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion on the approval of the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, we have a grant subaward for juvenile court. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chair, this is a school.
Lunch program reimbursement for juvenile court services.
Go ahead and grant. Authorize the completion of the online grant application.
Application for reimbursement by juvenile court services and authorize the chair to send documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 And I might note for the record, the amount is five thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars.
Thank you. Motion carries. Ex-Boy Idaho's four interim events, are there any questions or discussions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, my move to approve the four interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Barbara Park Event Center has one event. Are there any discussions or questions?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the one Barbara Park Education and Event Center agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the documents on behalf of the board.
I will second that. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Are there any questions or discussion regarding the agreements on today's agenda?
Well, Mr. Chair, Moses Barrett, the June Bugs, I don't know, I haven't heard.
Well, I was wondering about that.
Yeah, anybody familiar with the June Bugs? No.
Well, Moses had several others as well, but June Bugs was one of them.
I'd have to go out there and listen to him.
Are there any other questions or discussions?
Or comments?
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the nine agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that. The move and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Final item on this morning's agenda is the Coroner's Facility Notice of Intent to Renew. Zaman, wanna, wanna tell us all about that?
Mr. Chair, I can speak to it.
Sure.
This is simply notification of what you just approved in your.
In the budget.
Budget, which included appropriation for renewal release for the, provides that application to the facility's authority and trust.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
All right.
I move to authorize the chair to execute the Coroner's Facility Notice of Intent to Renew the Annual Appropriation List on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll second that. Okay, I might add that we haven't broken ground yet, I don't know when we will, but.
Soon. Who said, yeah, I think, on September.
Maybe we will be breaking ground soon, and I might add that this is not the financing vehicle of my choice. Anyway, you've heard the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. We're now being recessed. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, July twenty-seventh. The time is nine twenty-five. The Board of Commissioners, sitting as the Board of Emergency Medical Services District, is in session to conduct its open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Also with us are, go ahead.
Triple Clerk Sean Rain, Paramex.
Emily Grace, Auditor.
And Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
And substitute IT guy. All right, thank you.
Robert used to be our IT guy.
Oh, okay. Was that a promotion or a demotion?
Smart.
He's smart, yeah, good idea, all right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
I'm going to open the public hearing on the FY twenty-two tentative budget for Ada County Emergency Medical Services District. Is there anyone that would like to provide testimony?
Mr. Chair, on behalf of Phil McGrane, in pursuit of Idaho Code thirty-one sixteen-oh-four, I am presenting a balanced budget for the ensuing fiscal year, and we are convened to agree on a tentative amount per department for the FY twenty-one twenty-two tentative budget. That tentative budget for Emergency Medical Services District is twenty million, two-hundred-and-thirty, thirty-four thousand, ninety-two dollars.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? Would you like to say something about your budget?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you know, thank you for, you know, allowing us to present and budget deliberations, and, and this budget was difficult, you know, we have a lot of growth in the county, and, and right now, I know that I need to pay my people more, but I can't do both in the same year the way that we're funded right now, so we're out exploring different revenue streams that we can bring in, you know, non-tax revenue, but that's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay.
And we, we are going to use a little bit of fund balance to, to address some of the things that we are doing, most of it's capital, but we have a healthy fund balance, so I'm not worried about that at all.
Mr. Chair, so it looked like you had about twenty-three or so employees that were still under the fifteen mark, but with colon merit, that should bring them up above fifteen.
Right up, I know, next to it, yeah. It's our EMTs that are, that are at that low end of it, so, yeah, yeah.
Well, let's continue to work with Bethany, yeah, to get those up, we're competitive.
Is there anyone else who would like to write this one? You'd like to say something?
Yeah, stop hammering that, gavel.
I'll give you an advance warning. I'll now close the public hearing, is there any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair?
May I have a motion on the adoption of the FY twenty-two tentative budget?
Well, Mr. Chair, I move to consider and publish the tentative budget for the Emergency Medical Services District. Here and after a word to the EMS district. As submitted by the county budget officer, causing a notice to be published setting forth anticipated revenue.
Taxes and proposed expenditures.
And stating that the Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing for comment and feedback at four-thirty P.M. And held another public hearing on July twenty-first at six P.M., at which time the EMS district requests were reviewed and will subsequently fix a final budget and make appropriations.
To the EMS district. August ninth.
And, Mr. Chair, before I second that, and the budget amount is in, is twenty million, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, and ninety-three dollars, and I'll second that.
Ninety-two, sorry.
Ninety-two dollars, ninety-two dollars. Twenty million, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, and ninety-two dollars.
Ninety-two.
No sense. Okay.
Well, it does make sense. Okay, you've heard the motion. Unless there's further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
For your budget, or tentative.
T tentative.
We still have a process.
It's a long process.
It's a long process. Well, it should, should be a long process, all right. I'll entertain a motion in the Claims Journal.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We, do we have a motion on the approval of the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the documents on behalf of the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have three agreements on the agenda. With Kuna, and with Kuna, and.
Jeff Sanderson's Entertainment.
Entertainment.
And, Mr. Chair, so we started providing services, right, this week, in Kuna?
In Kuna, yeah, it was actually last Wednesday, it was our first day out there. And these two agreements are a business associate agreement for HIPAA, and the other agreement is actually, because Kuna's still doing their billing right now, so it allows us to share information since we're sharing personnel. In November, that will all in, and we'll be doing all the billing and bringing in revenue from the transports in the Kuna area, so that was one thing I couldn't really capture in this budget, because that, that agreement hadn't come to fruition, and we had to wait until the vote last week to make sure that that was actually going to occur, so we'll have somehow realized revenue that we'll bring in next year, so.
Maybe we go, have that go towards salary adjustments.
Yeah, that's, I, I, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you know, in my mind, I was thinking sometime, you know, late in the year, maybe right after the first of the year, once we, we have a pretty good projection on what we're going to bring in, maybe we can open the budget and use that into employee salaries, that was kind of what I was thinking, so.
Kathleen's like, mm.
She's like, slow down.
I like the approach. Usually what we do is not based on projections, but based on actuals.
Okay.
So it might have to be a little later in the year when we know what we've got, but if it's starting October one, I understand you'd get that right.
Okay.
It's a possibility.
If you start providing services last week, it starts last week, doesn't it, right?
So last week, Kuna's still getting the, the transport revenue for that piece of it. We're getting the tax revenue out of Kuna.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna follow up, Jeff Sanderson, is that the golf tournament?
Yep.
Yeah, Albertson's Tournament, he's still doing that, he's been doing that for twenty-five years?
Long time.
Yeah. Good crowds.
And there, there are concerts this year, too.
Yeah, I heard that they started doing concerts, I'm surprised the neighbors aren't complaining about that.
Tear up the golf course, but they do it, it works.
All right, all right, all right.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the three agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to send the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'll second that. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Do we have any discussion of a general nature?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the only thing, you know, that a general nature would just be the Delta variant for COVID, we're keeping a close eye on that, just making sure that we don't see any breakthrough infections in our folks, and a Dr. Hiller's clinic last week tested four vaccinated individuals, two of them came back positive, so we're just keeping a close eye on it. One thing we still do know is that people that are vaccinated don't get as sick, even if they get the Delta variant, but there's still a lot of emerging information concerning that, so we're just keeping an eye on it. We haven't seen a, a real increase in the number of patients that we see in the field, so that's a good sign for us. The hospitals are reaching their limits, but it's really because they're still doing their elective procedures, and all the stuff that people have put off for a year, that's still ongoing, and so kind of that buffer that they have for COVID has kind of driven the numbers up, but we're, we're meeting with the hospitals weekly.
We still transporting about one week or so?
It's a, it's a, we're doing about three a day.
Three, three.
Three days.
And that's been.
That's what it's been for the last.
That's what it's been since March, really.
Since March.
We see just little, it seems like just data and noise more than anything, we'll see little increases and decreases.
Why is that called Delta?
It's, they're using the Greek alphabet, so there are actually two variants of concern that we're kind of keeping an eye on right now, the Delta variant, the Lambda variant is the other one. Lambda, I mean, came out of either South Africa or South America, I can't remember.
at six P.M., at which time the CID District requests were reviewed and will subsequently fix a final budget and make appropriations to the CID District at the August ninth, 2021 CID Open Business Meeting.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll second the motion.
You've heard the motion. Um, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. May I have a motion on the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Is there any general discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Trent, um, Avamo is going to go out for a general obligation bond. Um, Ammon, do you know if they're still planning on doing that, and if so, how does that play into their budget?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, it's a good question. I've, uh, reached out to Jeff on several occasions to see where they're at on timing,